Good morning and welcome to the Community Development and Transportation Committee Meeting for September 25, 2019. The purpose of the committee meetings is for the city departments to pass along information to the City Council and discuss initiatives listed on the published agenda. By ordinance, the committee consists of the Mayor, members of the City Council, and the City Administrator. The ordinance mandates the City Administrator as Chair of the committee meetings, and by ordinance, the committee makes no formal decisions on committee matters; rather, items are voted to move to a Mayor and Council meeting for consideration and vote, or staff receives guidance from the committee regarding a matter. This is a public meeting but not a public hearing, therefore, while the meeting is open to the public, we do not take public comments or questions during the committee meetings. Public comments or questions are received at the regular City Council meetings held at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers on the second and fourth Monday of each month. The first item on today's agenda is the approval of the minutes for the Community Development and Transportation Committee Meeting for August 28, 2019. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Judy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Willsey. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please raise your hands. It's unanimous. Thank you. First item on the agenda, or second item on the agenda under Community Development, consideration of request to change the street name in honor of Dr. Frank Lewis to review and to review the street name policy. Ms. Ronberg and Ms. Stilwell.
Good morning. Okay. So what we've gotten here is a request from the Dr. Frank Lewis Legacy Foundation to change the street name in Roswell to Frank Lewis Drive. And they're requesting to rename Dobbs Drive. So here is Dobbs Drive, for those of you who need to see where it is. Basically, every property off of Dobbs Drive is owned by the city except for one, which is the piece on the left up in the corner. Let's see if it points to that here. The applicant has mailed them a letter indicating their request to the city. However, after speaking with legal, the access, since it's our property over here, access to this property is still owned by the city. So technically, according to the city attorney, that property isn't really on Dobbs Drive, but it would use a Dobbs Drive address. But they did mail a letter to this property owner indicating their request to the city. So our street name policy requirement indicates that this is what we would accept for anybody who wanted to change something. They must meet one of these criteria. A person who owns property of, but in the street in question, a developer who's developing a subdivision can request street names, obviously. And then Letter C, the illegally authorized representative of Department of the City of Roswell, agency of the US Government, state of Georgia, or Fulham County. The applicant has chosen Letter C, technically, and since they have no property on Dobbs Drive, they couldn't use Letter A, and they're not developing. So for the committee, I wanted to know, how did you want to proceed? Do you want to move this forward to change this street name? And it would be going to Frank Lewis Drive is the request that they have put in. Especially since all the property is owned by the city, other than that one piece, we would be the ones authorizing it to change and everything would, it would only be Dobbs Drive that would change, not Dobbs Court. Yes?
So the only thing that would happen would be we send this to council, vote of council, and it's changed?
Correct.
Nothing, we don't need to do anything with US Postal Service, none of that?
Well, we would then have to deal, obviously, we would have to inform the, all the agencies. When everything, once it's changed, it would go to our GIS division, and then they send out everything to indicate the address changes for everything. And so, yes, we'd have to change all our items on here that might have addresses off Dobbs Drive.
So I grew up with the Lewis family, Frank, Dr. Frank Lewis and Mamie and her son Aubrey played basketball with me, and I knew what a staple of the community he was. And I'm very supportive of this, and, I mean, for me, I'm good with it, so.
Just so all of you know, under our street name regulations, we do have a section in here, they do meet all of the requirements, and Letter E, which is the one that's been a concern of other items, they do meet Letter E also. So I just wanted to make sure you understood that they do meet all the street name regulation requirements. Yes?
Do we know the origin of Dobbs Drive?
No, I don't know the origin.
Is it not history? Is it not records about the name of the street?
I have no idea when it was named, and I can't say.
Was honoring anything, anybody?
I don't know.
Is any way to find out the origin of it?
What do you think?
We probably don't have records going that far back. Normally, in the past, roads were named for whoever lived on there and submitted it, so Mr. Dobbs, but don't know anything about. Thank you.
Or Mrs. Dobbs. So just to clarify, in this situation, the city or this committee would act as sponsor of the street name change? Is that? Yes, as to the fact that the only other option is a department of the city, and that's one of the things we're looking at changing, hopefully, because we don't know what department of the city would act as a representative. So one of the items, if you choose to move this forward, that's great, but one of the next item I actually have on here, which is to kind of tie together, is to remove that out of the policy and then indicate that it would come from this body, an elected official. After talking with legal, we felt that it should come from maybe an elected official instead of from a department of the city. Because we don't know, like, what department would actually be a representative in order to move something forward. We're not actually sure why a department was actually put in here originally back in 1995. But it was.
Motion to approve?
Motion approved by Councilmember Judy.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rosie. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, please raise your hands. Unanimous. Thank you. Item number three, consideration of Treebank, consideration of Treebank Fund Administration Project List for fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021.
Good morning. Just as a reminder, in the Unified Development Code, under Section 12.1.7, Treebank Funds, this body through, ended up through Mayor and Council, is required to approve the project list that the Treebank Funds are spent on. So what I'm bringing forward to you today is an update to the Fiscal 20 list, which was previously approved by Mayor and Council, as well as Fiscal 21 list. So on the Fiscal 20 project list, what I'm going to be presenting to you in is in your packet, is some separate funds that are specific to a transportation allocation. There's a carryforward of Fiscal 19 projects that were specific to Wreckin' Parks that they do have underway but have not had a chance to fully implement the funds from the Fiscal 19 list, so they want to carry those forward and create those as Fiscal 20 projects. And then we have previously approved Fiscal 20 projects, which will continue on, and then we have some new requests from various departments that I will also go over with you. And then we've got the Fiscal 21, what I would kind of call a draft list, which would be subject to additional changes once we go through the next year. So this is a little bit difficult, leads, or reads, or referring to the table in your packet may be a little bit easier. This would be on page 20 of your packet. Transportation has an allocation of just over $55,000, or almost $56,000. Earlier this year, in August, it was approved by committee and then on Mayor and Council in August for about $20,000 of that money to be spent for a couple of properties on the Hardscrabble Green Loop project. I've shown that here just to show you that allocation for this fiscal year, that that is coming out of this $55,000. And then the balance that is remaining, almost $36,000, is proposed to be used as partial funding for the main master plan, the Hardscrabble Green Loop Landscape Plan, which is for the whole project, not just for these two parcels that were called out separately due to the right-of-way negotiation that had some specific planting requirements to it. The total for the Hardscrabble Road and Chaffin Road project is about $120,000. So $35,000 would be out of the transportation special funds. The remainder, which will be on the next list, would be coming out of just the basic Treebank Funds, but we wanted to make sure that we showed that that's how those were being allocated. The Fiscal 19 carryforward projects are at the top of this page. Wreckin' Parks has three projects that were previously approved by Mayor and Council that they want to move forward. I mean, it's just based on timing with planting seasons and scheduling everything. They are still viable projects, and they want those to move forward. One is the Grimes Bridge at Grove Way Community Park. It's associated with a driveway project that is under construction, I believe they started, and they were getting close. We've also got the, another area within City Hall that was previously approved. They just need to finish spending out the balance of about $5,000 associated with that. And then there's the Roswell Area Park, the front entrance, the north side, so the south side that they've been working on, this is the north side, and just based on project timing, it slid out a little bit, so it's going to move from the Fiscal 19 to Fiscal 20 timeframe. And then at the bottom are the two previously approved projects that Council had approved for Fiscal 20. One is a planting fund and one is a maintenance fund. Those would just continue to carry forward with one change, which I'll present to you on the next slide, and that is that Wreckin' Parks has asked for an increase in that maintenance fund. They had originally asked for $20,000, and then just based on what they're seeing as expenditures for some of that maintenance, they've asked to increase it to a total of $50,000. So that would be the $30,000 you see on that top line on this slide. Four additional projects that they have asked for for Fiscal 20, which are new requests, would be at Oxbow and Dobbs, is a landscape project with a joint effort with Environmental Public Works to plant there at the intersection, as well as some additional work on the south side at Roswell Area Parks entrance. There's some additional work at Grove Way Community Park with replacing some trees that are not doing so well. And then there's a final phase for the master plan here at City Hall that they have also included at $30,000 with, I'm not quite sure what that project start would be, but they're expecting it to be within the Fiscal 20 timeframe. This is the remainder for transportation. As I mentioned, for the Hardscrabble Road and Chaffin Road Landscape Plan, the balance of the $120,000 project estimate for that plan that you have seen here at committee a couple of months ago, so it's about $84,000. And then Environmental Public Works also has asked for a planting fund and a maintenance fund in the area of about $50,000 for each of those. And just as a reminder on these funds that are referred to as planting or maintenance funds, those are not to exceed limits, and the individual projects for planting have to come back to committee for approval before the Community Development would approve those expenditures through the invoicing. The maintenance funds are just a not-to-exceed, they are not projects that come back to committee, as long as they are maintenance activities and in the areas that the funds are allowed to be spent on, then we are allowed to approve those as they come on along with a not-to-exceed. They can't exceed those amounts. And at this point, I just went ahead and left on here that the fire did not have new requests. We have had requests from them in projects in the past, so I just wanted to make sure that I documented that. I will stop here to see if there's any questions specific to the Fiscal 20 projects, and then I'll just do a quick summary on the Fiscal 21 projects. A side note, you will note in the package that, for the financial impact, the, there is, as I mentioned earlier, the fund specific for transportation, that the balance would be available for that, the Hardscrabble project, and then there would be a budget amendment in order to move the funds from the fund balance into the specific organizational object and project for the Tree Care Funds. The money is available, it's just a matter of us getting everything approved and aligned.
Thanks, everyone. Doors open.
I've got several questions. I just want to clarify that when we go through 21, these requests will virtually deplete the Treebank Fund as it stands today, correct?
Close to that, yes, ma'am. And that would be if we did not collect any further funds over the next couple of years. Yeah, we have about $622,000 in there, and so our total right now between the two is less than that, it's in the $500,000 range, if I remember my math correctly, because I believe we've got $100 and, hold on, this is my history, let me get the right one. Got the threes, or the, yeah, 379, and then 230, so 590, 580 would be the total that we would be at today if all those funds were expended that are shown on there, and we didn't collect any future funds.
Right. And can, I know this is hard to predict, but can you give me an average on what we would collect normally in a year? Is there?
I don't have that information. I realize it's based on development. I really don't have a clue, I don't know whether or not you, I have no sense of, I could certainly find that, I'd be happy to email everybody and let you know kind of what we see, have seen, but I honestly have no clue.
Well, and the reason why I'm asking is, I'm concerned about the Hardscrabble project. I realize we've got money in for, we've got the master plan for the entire length from Itris to King, which I appreciate, and thank you so much. One of the issues that I've got, and we've talked with Wexford on numerous occasions, and just to go over the background on this, Wexford had planted, there's an unusually wide right-of-way in this area, it's 50 feet on each side of the road, it's huge, but that comes from when hardscrabbled, the state wanted to foreline it, and so we know the history there. Wexford planted trees in the right-of-way, which they should have known better, but they did not, and they had extensive landscaping at their front entrance. Fulton County actually came through as part of our project and replaced the water lines. Fulton County was the entity that actually removed all of their landscaping. Now, I am in contact with Fulton County, and I'm trying to see if there's any way that they're willing to replace some of that landscaping at the entrance of Wexford. But if not, in our master plan, we're basically, of which we have been describing as a linear park, and we're pumping a good bit of tree fund money into this area, which I'm thankful for, but my question is whether or not we should have, right now, we've, at the entrance to Wexford, we've got six trees, three on each side, and when you consider the landscaping that they had prior to that, it's not even comparable. So what I'd like to do is put up for consideration additional Treebank money at the entrance of Wexford, in the event that I'm not successful in getting Fulton County to pony up with some money to re-landscape that area. So I just want to make sure that going forward, that there is money available to do that, and I know that the Transportation Department doesn't have any requests going into 21, but I'd suggest that the Transportation Department should have requests, and if we are going to deem Hardscrabble Road a linear park, perhaps it should be the Wreckin' Parks Department that puts in the request. So I would just like to put that out there for consideration and let you all know that I'm actively working on it, and hopefully, we can at least partially replant what Fulton County has pulled out, because I think it would benefit the city of Roswell.
I would say, what is the total amount that's been estimated for the project?
What's been, for the master plan, what's been pulled out so far, it's close to $140,000.
Okay, and we've got 80.
It's 120 specific to the master plan, the other 20 is actually not associated with the master plan, it was for additional planning on private property.
Right. And then that was an agreement for the right-of-way.
Right, a separate agreement. So for the master plan itself, on the high end of the estimate, there was kind of a range, $120,000 for the full installation.
It's about 1.25 miles.
Okay, and we've got about 85?
We have 120 total. There's, it's in two different locations, so the very first list here, the bottom project is 35, almost $36,000, that's going to come out of the tree, the transportation allocation funds, and then from the Treebank Funds, and they're all Treebank Funds, it's just that those were special fund-specific transportation previously, they just got shifted over, and then the balance is going to be, this blue line here, is the $84,000 and change, which would give you the total of $120,000 for the total on the project.
Do you have the master plan on?
I don't have it with me, no, ma'am. I did not bring it. I have glanced at it, but I did not bring it with me.
Would you like to look at my copy?
Sure.
So since we're talking about landscaping plans, what is the status, and I would to know if it's fully funded, the East Roswell landscaping one? Since we're talking about that, I would like to know if it's fully funded, or we need more funds to complete this project, and what the status on this project on East Roswell Park?
That would be a Jeff Leatherman question, I will let him take the seat.
The East Roswell Park project is not funded and not considered in the fiscal year projects here at the Treebank. That was a, an individual budget request, and we're looking at that either at mid-year or potentially bring it back to Council the following fiscal year. So we've funded the front half of the project, which was a parking lot project, so we did the parking lot onto the, if you're looking at the building on the left-hand side, but the landscaping in the front, the design is complete, but that is not funded right now.
And so what do we need to do to get it funded, maybe add it up in this list? Because I really want to get this going, this plan has been designed, or at least on talk for, for a couple of years now, and I would like to know what it's going to take to get it funded, so we can go ahead and complete this plan.
Sure. So similar to the projects that you see on this list, the Oxbow, Roswell Area Park, Grove Way Community Park, those have been projects, as well as City Hall, that have been in the hopper for the last couple of years, and the East Roswell Park kind of slides in on the design process behind those. And so we've been working on Oxbow, Roswell, Grove Way, and City Hall, and the East Roswell Park is a priority behind those, and it will continue to be a priority. So if there are additional fundings in the Treebank coming into 21, or there's other places that we can allocate resources for that project, staff will be working on those recommendations.
Great. So I imagine that this will come to Mayor and Council voting?
Yes, sir.
So I would like to see when this comes to the Mayor and Council voting, align that, you know, contemplate the East Roswell Park, and so we can get to vote on that as well. I don't want to get lost in the list, and I don't even see on this list that's presented today, so I would like to see this on the list and be contemplated.
Put it as a project for 21, so that we have it identified as a future project?
Yeah, 20 or 21, because we've been waiting for a while on that, so the sooner the better for the community. We use East Roswell Park, so definitely I would like to see a line where we come to discussion, contemplating that list. Thank you.
Jeff, just to clarify, did you say you were planning to bring it into the mid-year budget?
We have just been notified by Finance that are, to start working on those mid-year budget requests, so we're looking at various projects and prioritizing those within the department, and it very well could be a request that we have at mid-year as well.
I would agree, as soon as possible, as we can get it funded and on the list. Great.
I agree with the Mayor on the Wexford situation as well. Hopefully Fulton County will step up and take care of what happened there, but if not, you know, I think we need to find what it would cost to make that hole and figure out where, where that could come from in this, and at some point with the, with the complete street project, so I'm open to that, too. So I guess with all these up in the air, should we defer this to next committee, till we get some more information?
Would a workshop be more appropriate, where we can actually go through the list, and if there's changes that we need to make?
It depends on the timing, we're kind of tight as far as work sessions go.
And just to add to that, we would not be able to have any invoices approved out of the Fiscal 20 budget, because I think we're already hitting up against, because there's a very small amount that was previously approved by Council, and so I don't know where we are with that, but eventually, we'd hit a point, if it's not, if it's not on the list, they can't continue with the projects.
Well, and we're coming up on the planting season, so we do want to need, you know, to use that money, but, so.
This, and if, this would not be coming until the next Council meeting, which would be, whatever that is, in October. We've got some time in between now and then, I can certainly have a conversation with Transportation, and I know they've been working with Wreckin' Parks on the plan for Hardscrabble, take a look and see. They've also, Wreckin' Parks has the requests for, you know, the maintenance fund, the planting funds, just like with the East Roswell Park, the three departments could work together to look at what their needs are and where those can fit into here, and some of these may be, we're only doing, the budget amendment is only for Fiscal 20 at this time, we will not be doing that for Fiscal 21, and so we've got some, you know, as we're looking at some of these estimates of money that's coming in, can take a look and see how some of those things might be able to shift from a priority perspective into the various years in order to cover everything that has been asked for today, and that could be presented at And that could be presented at council in that respect, because it's, the fiscal '21 is subject to change, the fiscal '20 is what we'll be funding.
Well, and I think we have an issue with '20 as far as funding. So do you think you can have the information for us?
I believe so.
For planting at the Wexford entrance?
Well, that would be a question for Raccoon Parks and Transportation.
As well as the East Roswell Area Park, because I don't think we want to push any of that funding out to '21, if we can.
Well, I'd have to defer to Jeff on the East Roswell Park as far as the schedule for that, and whether or not it is, they could be prepared to spend that money in fiscal '20, or not, for the East Roswell Park. And then the planting schedule for hardscrabble is within fiscal '20, it's a matter of working on the planting plan of what additional, what, what you're wanting, I guess, for the landscaping plan there.
Can I ask you a question real quick? Seeing this is a fire drill, everybody around here. If we push this one committee to the next committee, would that impact it, or we'd be all right?
That'd be a question for the departments that are spending this money, I can't answer that.
There's a couple of projects on our side, specifically the City Hall project, and then the Grove Way Community Park projects that are currently underway with different funding sources. And so these projects kind of come in alongside of those existing funding sources to finish, like the planting, for example, at the Grove Way Community Park. We have a different funding source that's doing the driveway, and then once the driveway is complete, we're coming in right behind that, and this planting season is the intent to finish that project. City Hall is similar in that we have contractors that are working on previously allocated funds, and so we do get some utility in moving those projects forward. There's a couple of others on the list that are future projects that come either late fall, if we can catch it in the planting season, or we'll turn around right after the beginning of the spring. And so those could potentially be deferred for further conversation. And we could narrow that list down to, to get the high priority kind of mobilization projects to council here in the next, in October, and then pull the other projects that aren't time-sensitive for a future discussion, if that's helpful.
So for us, based on the guidance I've heard here this morning, I'm confident we can work with community development and slightly modify Transportation's request to allocate additional money towards Wexford, more so than what's in the plan that was thrown, that was shown to you two months ago, if that's the pleasure of the council. We're going to have enough time to modify that request and not bring this back to committee, and keep this on, keep this on the schedule for first council meeting in October.
Perfect.
Great.
Quick question, when is the planting season, 2019 planting season ending?
It really depends on the weather. It starts about now, but we wouldn't be playing.
Whenever fall starts.
Yeah, but with the 90-degree weather that we've had in the last couple of weeks, we're, you know, we can do some larger trees, you can't do ground cover. So it's a little bit different depending on the weather. And then really, what we try to do is wedge it in before it starts getting really cold. So we want to get plants, material, trees established before you start to see the cold weather coming in. So we're doing some screening projects with trees, we're doing some planting projects with trees right now in shrubs. We'll sneak them in, hopefully, right around, we try to hit about middle of November at the very latest, and then we kind of watch what the weather is doing, and then maybe sneak a couple of projects in towards the later part of November. By about December, we're generally done.
Thank you. So this means that the sooner we can vote on this, the better?
Yeah.
It'd be to get more things done in 2019 planting season?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
The last thing I'll show you real quickly, and then I have a suggestion on the moving forward of the lists, if it would be more comfortable for a committee. These are the fiscal '21 new requests, just to give you an idea of the things that Raccoon Parks and Environmental Public Works have upcoming. Again, the planting and maintenance funds for both Raccoon Parks and for Environmental Public Works. We've got the front entrance to Henbury Park, some additional tree replacement at the Physical Activities Center related to the addition that is proposed there at Roswell Area Park, and then the front entrance to Big Creek Park are the new requests for, or expected request for fiscal '21. And what I was going to suggest, if, if not moving, the fiscal '20 projects are the priority for moving forward, this particular page, which is the fiscal '19 carryforward and the fiscal '20 previously approved, would in my mind be the priorities, because they are already underway. Some of them, the funding is already started and allocated, it's just a matter of the fact that they were fiscal '19 requests instead of fiscal '20, and so we just need to make sure we get everything aligned. For the fiscal '20 new requests, if we need, if this committee wants to see those final numbers before they go to council, we could certainly push, split it up and do the first half that are the carryforwards and already approved projects, go ahead and go take those to council, and then this come, this part of the list come back to committee, if you have some concerns about seeing those numbers and what those plans are going to cover for either East Roswell or for the Wexford area on hardscrabble. But that would just be in your direction.
I would feel better about that, but it's up to everybody.
No, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, I just want to see all of these projects moving, so.
Yeah.
And anything that staff can do to, to include the East Roswell Area Park as well as at Wexford for the council meeting would be appreciated.
So motion to move forward, '19 and '20 projects that are underway, and bring back to committee the '20 requests and '21 requests.
Does that motion capture what you need?
Yes, it does.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by the mayor.
So I have a question then. This is to defer this item to another committee meeting, or just to mayor and council, straight to mayor and council with the addition that we discussed here today?
There's, there's two parts, if, and I'll repeat it to make sure I understand. My understanding is that this list, the fiscal '19 carryforward request and the fiscal '20 already approved list, you've actually already seen this, this will just be an update to show that this is the total. We'll go to the next council meeting for approval. The fiscal '20 new requests, I will be getting with Raccoon Parks and Transportation to update the hardscrabble estimate, as well as look at seeing how we can shift some things around in order to go ahead and move as much as East Roswell forward into nineteen, or to 20, excuse me, into fiscal '20 as we can, and update this list and bring this and '21 together back to you at the next committee meeting, and I'm assuming maybe the next comdev committee meeting is what I'm recommending. And then we will put that on the next council meeting, following that, to make sure that everybody sees those numbers.
So at this point, it's impossible to bring forward to the next mayor and council meeting the East Roswell Park landscape project?
Not without this committee seeing those numbers before they go to council.
Okay. So motion on the floor to move forward, but a second? Any further questions or discussion?
And just one other comment, is if we could see at the next committee kind of history of what funds going into the Tree Bank have been over the last few years, if you can do that.
I believe we can get you that. I definitely know how much you've spent, I keep track of that.
I guess just some rough idea of what you'd expect it as, you know, undoing and coming funding.
So you look, just looking for a total allocation each year, like a trend?
Yes.
With the trend for the past five years?
Right, right.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion?
I've just got one other, this is just a nuance. I personally have a little bit of a problem with our tree bank money, because basically people pay into it when they remove trees. And as part of the maintenance, I saw on these lists that we also include tree removal. To me, that's, and I, I get it, I get it, we do have dead trees out there, and we do have issues, especially when tornadoes come through, but to use tree bank money to remove trees, I think we need to allocate money from a different area in order to do that.
This, this body changed that.
I'm just putting it out there.
This body changed that code to include that. The intent was for, and it's actually very rarely that it's dead trees that are being removed, it's really more for maintenance allocation for treatments, as Mr. Leather mentioned a minute ago, there's a lot of things that are done to help maintain the trees in that sense. It can be used for removal of dead trees. I don't know that we actually have necessarily used it at a great level for that, and that...
We do have tree removal in here, not just tree pruning or...
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So, yes, as, as indicated, we generally will use these funds for tree maintenance, and then the removal of dead trees associated with health and safety issues around our park facilities, or around adjacent property owners. So if we have a tree that is dead or dying, that's potentially a risk to somebody's private property next to a park facility, we'll use these funds.
And I know in the past, we have removed those trees, but not at the expense of the tree bank.
I see.
That's correct.
Just throwing it out.
Yeah, and we do, within our operations budget, have separate tree maintenance money that we use for tree removal as well.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hands, and it's unanimous. Thank you. Thanks, Jack, thanks, Lenore. Moving on to Transportation, consideration of a blanket approval to perform right-of-way acquisition services and accept right-of-way options, North Coleman Road mini roundabout project in an amount not to exceed $43,000.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So our first item, that's North Coleman Road mini roundabout right-of-way acquisition services. So just to give you some background on the project, so the corridor is North Coleman here, if you look at the screen, Pine Grove Road is to the south end of the corridor, and then it runs north-south, and then takes a 90-degree turn, and then connects to Woodstock Road. A totally separate project that's funded and we have been working on is installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of Woodstock and North Coleman. We should have that installed early next year. So the item before you today is, this is the location of the proposed mini roundabout. It's at the intersection of North Coleman and Lake Crest Drive. That's the entrance of the Land O' Lakes subdivision, if you're familiar with the area. So some facts about the corridor. So the design, as you approved last year, it's, we've been working on it, it's about 85% complete. It had the fiscal year '19 funds, and then this North Coleman is a collector, classified as a collector road, and like I said, it connects Pine Grove to Woodstock, and then the future signal at Woodstock and North Coleman. The average daily traffic on North Coleman is a little over 3,000 cars, and the posted speed limit is 30 miles an hour, but the 85th, the average 85th percentile speed is 46, so that's 16 over the posted speed limit. So some of the project benefits as we list, so it is an intersection improvement to provide safer turns for anybody to turn out of the subdivision. With those speeds and the grades on the street, it kind of poses an unsafe situation, and of course, to mitigate those speeding issues, you know, we could always add turn lanes, that probably cost about the same, but then the turn lanes actually, they don't do anything to mitigate the speeding on the corridor. So while we do that, there is also some secondary benefits. So it provides a safer crossing for pedestrians, we're going to have crosswalks, and also for the PTVs, the golf carts. We've had several requests since the city passed the ordinance about maybe two, three years ago, I believe it was 2016. So we have had several requests for PTV connections, and that also gets used for the bicycles and pedestrians to basically access the Canton Street area. And then, of course, safer multimodal access to Canton Street. So why a mini roundabout, so it is, you know, one of the very cost-effective intersection improvements for such low-volume roads, and it would be the first one in the city of Roswell. And it is, we believe, it would be a good test for some future implementation. We have a lot of problems like this on similar roads, especially for speeding on collector roads. So if this is a successful, and I have no reason to say that it wouldn't work or perform good here, it's been tested all around us. There's several mini roundabouts in the cities, in the neighboring cities. So it'll be a very good test here at this intersection for a mini roundabout. So the item today is the right-of-way acquisition, so like I said, we have been working on the design, so we need some right-of-way permanent or temporary easement from five parcels. That's the total square footage of the easements and the right-of-way. Now I have a map to show. So this is the North Coleman, is going horizontally here on the, on the screen, and this is the entrance to the subdivision. So it impacts this parcel to the corner on the left side, and this one, and this one, and this one, and there is some temporary easement that's not shown here, but it is needed from this. So no huge impacts to anybody. This parcel's driveway gets rebuilt, and this, the crossing is going to be, of course, a multimodal crossing for pedestrians, bicycles, and golf carts. And we've been talking to all five property owners, and they are, they are on board. So staff recommendation is to give us a blanket approval. We'll bring it to a future council meeting for the formal approval, to get all the right-of-way services in order to accept all of the signed options and expedite the process. And we have used a similar blanket approval process for all these projects that are listed here, and it's been very successful, very efficient, makes it easier for staff, and, you know, kind of makes it go quick through the process. So the estimated number is 43,000, and hopefully, we will not need more than that. And the funding is available in the pedestrian safety and speed management account, that's where this project was kind of, this is the account this whole project is basically funded out of. Any questions on that?
Floor's open.
Motion to approve.
Approved by Councilwoman Judy.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Willsey. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you. We go to you, Doc.
I'm staying.
Okay, so we have three approved, one extension. Motion carries. Number five, consideration, Mayor, the city administrator, we have a contact with Michael Fisher, an national, for concept development and public outreach for Riverside Road and Pink Street project, in an amount not to exceed $187,125.
Thank you, Gary. So this is also another funded effort in the fiscal year 2019. We had $200,000, and the purpose of that $200,000 was to do a survey, do public involvement, and come up with a concept for the Riverside corridor. And the anticipated improvements for the corridor would include safety and operational improvements at intersections, streetscape features, speed reduction measures, and improved bicycle and pedestrian facilities along the corridor, including crossing of Riverside Road. So here is the project limit. So this is Riverside Road, so it starts here kind of at the Indian Springs Road, or the entrance to the, actually a little bit west from the entrance. This is where kind of the historic Gateway Project ends. So this project picks up here, goes along the way. This is Riverside Park, this is the big church here, and continues to the intersection of Riverside and Dogwood, and then goes under 400, and then ends at the intersection of Riverside and Old Alabama Road, so that's the project limit. We have surveyed the whole area, and now we are ready for the next steps. So again, you know, some of the issues that we have heard for many, many years, and we continue to hear, is just the pedestrian and bicycle access along the corridor and crossing the corridor, and then some of these side streets, the neighborhoods complaining that during congested hours, it is just too hard to make a left out, especially this River Lake. The problem is the traffic backs up from the intersection of Highway 9 and Riverside beyond their entrance, so it just makes it much more harder for them to get out, which is, it is a problem, but it's a very common problem around the city, and really in all cities around us during the congested hours. But anything we could do to make it easier for the residents to kind of exit their subdivisions? These are mostly just all those subdivisions that just have one access point, so they really don't... mostly just all those subdivisions that just have one access point. So they really don't have any other options to go. And this just shows some of the discrepancies we have on the pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. So like I said, we have already completed the survey in March 2019 for $43,000. So the next step is concept development and public outreach. And the scope of work for our consultant would be to reach out to all the internal and external public and stakeholder, stakeholders, and then data gathering and analysis, and come up with a concept plan with some typical sections. So the consultant, of course, they would always review the previous efforts and the existing plans, studies, and projects. Parks and Recs recently completed the River Master Plan, so they'll definitely look at that. And we'll work with them. Of course, we'll include the Rexon Parks staff in those efforts as well. So the staff recommendation is to hire Michael Baker. They are one of our on-call firms, and to bring a design contract to you in an amount not to exceed $187,000 to a future council meeting. And so we had, you had approved $200,000 in the fiscal year 19. We have spent $43,300 out of that already. So the remaining is $156,700. So staff is recommending using the remaining fund savings from another project that we actually recently talked about, the Highway 92 and Woodstock. That's where we are adding a right turn lane and making an improvement to the Roswell High School entrance. So there is money left over in that. So staff is recommending to move $30,425 from that into this account to make up the difference. Do you have any questions?
Floor is open.
In your opinion, would this fit into, my only concern would be with the Gateway Project and possible River Park's master plan and all those different things. Would this, is this design premature? Or is, would it be the same regardless based upon those two plans ending, or those two plans coming together?
I think this is long overdue. In the River Master Plan, if you look at it, we know where most of the traffic generators, traffic generation would be, like that ASAN company. Something is going to go there eventually, sooner or later. So we know that. So yes, this plan could definitely make the corridor ready for whatever happens along the corridor.
So we basically retrofit the plans to fit this?
Yes. And we'll work very closely with that plan, and of course, with Rexon Parks Department. Any progress that we make, we know. So this plan would definitely accommodate the future improvements, whatever comes out of the River Master Plan.
Thank you.
So how long is it going to take this study?
So this is public involvement and the concept. Rob, do you have an answer to
The key deliverable out of this project is a vetted concept from our public that's going to be approved by this body. I would expect that to take six to nine months.
I would agree that this is a very needed project. It's a very tight, narrow road and heavily traveled by both cars, pedestrians and bikes. And as long as it does take into account the future projects with the historic Gateway and the River Park Master Plan, 100% support moving ahead. So motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Willsey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Judy. Any further questions or discussion?
I just, I just want to reiterate the scope of this project. So when we got to the public, where exactly along the corridor is this project? So for example, it doesn't go all the way to Highway 9, correct? Because that's part of the Gateway Project.
Yes.
So the scope of work here, can you define it?
Yes. So I'll just go back to this map. So just west of the Indian Springs Drive, that's where the project limit starts. That's the area we have surveyed.
Right.
So we can't really go beyond even if you wanted to. And that's where the historic Gateway Project ends. So this will pick up and tie into the design of the historic Gateway. And then goes all the way, includes the intersection of Riverside, Dogwood, and Riverside and Old Alabama, and that's where it ends.
I just want to make sure that the public isn't confused that this includes a Gateway Project.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we'll clarify that at every opportunity. Rob, what do you want to add?
And if I can clarify, you don't see it off of the map here. Indian Springs Drive is the first intersection on Riverside, past the bridge. The bridge is just off the screen.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, please raise your hands. Unanimous. Thank you. Item number seven, consideration of a resolution to submit a local maintenance and improvement grant, L-MIG project list, project list for 2020 to the Georgia Department of Transportation, and to accept the L-MIG funds in the amount of $968,490.29 from GDOT. Mr. Ralph.
Thank you, Gary. So the local maintenance and improvement grant, this is the yearly thing. We get money from GDOT to resurface some of our roads, and we really appreciate that. That's very helpful. So for the fiscal year 20, Roswell's share by the formula is $968,490. So this L-MIG funding, it comes with special provisions. It could be used on projects that are, type of projects that are listed here, paving, sidewalk, intersection improvements, bridge maintenance, and connectivity. But we use it for resurfacing only. So staff is recommending spending the 20 funding on the following roads. We got Bowen Road. So I have a map for the list of roads, and I can explain it better. But we have a list, Bowen Road, Jones Road, Howes Way, Henry Road, Old Roswell Road. And once the application grant is accepted, the city will accept the funding in the amount I mentioned before. And these, again, we've been selecting these roads using the same method for a very long time. So we visually inspect each and every road in the city every year. And based on the ranking, we have created a list. Every road in the city is on that list. And using these L-MIG funds, we just go down the list, pick up the worst roads, and then pave them. And same method we use for collector roads, and same for the, for the local roads. So this is now the map. So Bowen Road from Highway 92 down to Jones Road, that's the first one. And then Jones Road from Bowen, all the way to Woodstock Road. And then we have Howes Way, which is right there. So Crab Apple and Howes Road going along Howes. It stops like midway, and then there's a gap. And then again, we do the Howes Way between Howes Road and Highway 9. And then Henry Road is here from Elkins, going all the way to the city limit. And then Old Roswell Road from Henry Road south to the Henry Park Drive. This is just north of that, the new development with a whole bunch of houses and the roundabout. So that's the list where we want to, where we are recommending to use the L-MIG. And then, so staff recommendation is to bring it to a future council meeting, approve, and there is a resolution attached to apply for the grant. So approve the resolution and accept the funds from GDOT for this work. So any questions on that?
Floor is open.
So we could knock out six and seven together here on this list, because it's the next one.
Yeah, I skipped six by accident. I'll go back to that after this one.
Yeah.
Do we need to combine them?
We don't need to. I mean, I would just keep them separate, you know, two different funding sources. So we will go back to number six after this one, whatever the number was for that.
And just to clarify, the roads that are on the state-funded are basically the next ones on our priority list?
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
And the priority list is strictly based on the condition of those roads.
Right. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Judy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the mayor. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, please raise your hands. Unanimous. Thank you. Going back to item number six, consideration to accept the fiscal year 2020 road resurfacing list and use of approved funds in an amount not to exceed $1,206, $222,000 from the citywide road resurfacing reconstruction budget. Mr. Ralph.
Thank you, Gary. So this is the local money, local money that you approved as part of the current fiscal year, and we truly appreciate that. So you have given us one point, a little over 1.2 million for the local road resurfacing. And again, the program that I explained, we visually inspect, and we rank all the roads based on their condition, and we use the money that you give us, and go down the list as far down as we possibly can. So this list contains about 8.6 centerline miles of road. And one thing I do need to clarify is, in your packets, the list that you see, it has, it shows Roundsville Road is included, but in fact, it's not. There was a glitch in the system for some reason. So this Centane Chase Drive should have been the road that should have been included. So in your packet, it's reversed, but I have the corrected list here and the corrected map. So it's a long list. I'm not going to go over. But you can see that this Centane Chase Drive is included here, and Roundsville Road is excluded. And that's what the map also requested. So that's where we want to use the local resurfacing money, salt subdivision streets. So we already have a contract with Allied Paving Contractor for road resurfacing. So we'll use the same contractor for this item and the L-MIG resurfacing money that we just talked about. So staff's recommendation is to bring this list for approval to a future council meeting. Do you have any questions?
Floor is open.
Yes, I have a question. The Old Alabama Road Connector, what I see on the map here, out of Old Alabama Road.
Old Alabama Road. That's not on the list.
This section is Old Alabama. What is this section, red?
Rob, do you know? Maybe a road to the side.
That's, it's deceiving based on the map. The red line you see is just west to the Old Alabama Connector, where Mohammed's red dot is.
That's the.
Old Alabama Connector is the white line immediately next to that road in red.
Yeah. Yeah, that's Old Alabama. This is one of the subdivision streets. And I, yeah, I don't know the name of these streets, but they should be on the list.
Is that Sharingham Drive? It's the last ones on the road.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So nothing on Old Alabama Road Connector, because recently Alpharetta did the section. We shared this road between Alpharetta and Roswell.
Yes.
Old Alabama Connector.
Yes.
So when you're coming from the Alpharetta side, it's brand-new paving there, and then you get to a little bridge there, and then it starts Roswell, and it's the old asphalt on the Roswell side of. So I don't know if this was ever coordinated with Alpharetta to do the whole Old Alabama Road Connector, or just Alpharetta did their share, and then we eventually will do ours.
So, yeah, you know, like I said, that's actually not how we do it. I know the older pavement next to newer pavement doesn't look nice, but we don't do this to make our roads look nice. We do it when they are at a condition where they need to be resurfaced. That's when we do it. So I agree that it would look nice to do it at the same time, but you know, it really, when it's bad, that's when we want to do it.
Because it's a big sign saying, welcome to Roswell. And then all of a sudden, you get into the old, so this is how it looks today. I'm just saying, you know, might be perfectly, just might be aesthetic issue that also Alpharetta took care of, or I don't know how this happened, but it's a really big contrast when you drive into Roswell with the big signs saying, welcome to Roswell. And so I'm just saying, if it was more efficient, maybe at some point coordinate this, sharing roads with neighbor cities to maybe do all at once. Maybe you can get even better cost, just doing all the length of the road shared with two cities. I don't know, I'm just throwing this idea for the future, when, when a shared road is done in one side, the other city, then maybe we want to jump in and get a better deal, do it all together at once. Thanks.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Judy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Willsey. Any further questions or discussion?
One more question. And on this resurfacing, we're going to be removing the old asphalt and getting a new one.
Yes.
But we're going to be adding on top of existing asphalt and raising the road altogether.
Yeah, we don't do that anymore. We always mill, remove the old, and then relay.
Great. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor, please raise your hands. unanimous. Thank you. Item number eight, consideration to amend Article 21.2.2.5 Small Cell Technology in Chapter 21 of the City of Roswell Code Ordinances. Mr. Ralph.
Thank you. I'm going to have Rob Delros present that item.
Good morning, everyone. Item number eight was a partnership. I've been working hard with Scott Bruner and David and Bob to revise our ordinance for small cell implementation. For those of you who may know, there was a bill passed in state legislature last spring that goes into effect October 1 of this year. We have revised our city ordinance to reflect the changes that have been required by that state bill. The next slide will show you a brief summary of those changes. We have provided both the current ordinance and the new ordinance in your packets, the highlights of the changes, our new fees, that is the maximum we are allowed to require for small cell implementation based on the new bill. For a co-location request, it is $100 per facility. For an upgraded pole, so if the request from the small cell company is to remove an existing pole and replace it with an upgraded pole at the exact same location, we are allowed to charge $250. For a new pole, we are allowed to charge $1,000. I will say that based on discussion with you as a body, when this ordinance was first passed, a lot of the concern was our ability to try and prevent new poles from being in place. The methodology and the number of requirements that we are still allowed to ask for as far as justification for a new pole are still in place. That fee is $1,000. And I will say that the height at which the small cell ordinance rules apply to, based on the state law, has been modified from 45 feet to 50 feet. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them with help from Bob Willsey.
Floor is open.
So I know that Alpharetta passed something this past week, and obviously, they, I think the title of the article was, everybody held their nose to pass this because they had to. Because we're kind of hamstrung by federal and state law. Do you feel comfortable with this, that we're in good standing here, and we're not doing anything that's going to put us in legal jeopardy?
All we did is comply with what they passed.
Thank you.
Quick question about the fees. Does the state regulate like a minimum, maximum, or like any range? Or every city come with a fee that they think is more proper for the city?
The fees you see on the slide and the fees in the new ordinance reflect the maximum that the state will allow cities to collect, and we are recommending those maximum amounts.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Judy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the mayor. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. Unanimous. Thank you. Item number nine, consideration to update the policy and procedures of the City of Roswell Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program.
So I'm going to have Scott Bruner, our city traffic engineer, present the next two items.
Good morning. This item was actually brought before the committee back in May. And we got some guidance from the committee, and we're actually bringing back amendments. from the committee, and we're actually bringing back amendments to the prior program procedures and policies. So just as some background, as most of you know, we have two basic types of traffic calming programs, and the first one is the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, which usually deals with speeding in excess of 10 miles per hour over the posted speed limit. That program usually involves constructable physical improvements to the roadway to actually calm the traffic or reduce speeds. The second program is the neighborhood, I'm sorry, the Residential Traffic Enhancement Control Program, and that's for less speeds, usually five to 10 miles per hour, and that usually consists of more passive devices, which are all standardized traffic control devices. So those are things that we can install really without anybody's approval, but we work with the neighborhoods to do that. So therefore, this, you know, this item is just going to seek approval for amending the policy that was adopted by the mayor and council back in 2011. The key change here that we're proposing deals with the elimination of vertical deflection devices, which are speed humps, speed tables, and speed cushions, and then get into why we want to do that. So there's a whole bunch of problems with vertical deflection devices, and the top three there are in red. They interfere with emergency response, not only response time, but in the transport of critical patients. You know, you don't want to be trying to do CPR or running a central line and hitting a speed hump or multiple speed humps. So it is an issue for emergency response, plus it takes the wear and tear on their apparatus. It is attributable to some serious fatal motorcycle and bicycle crashes, and almost all of them at some point will cause damage to vehicles. So what's key to this is that the city has adopted the International Fire Code, and that code and our code therefore gives our fire code official, which is our fire marshal, Chief Vac is here this morning, that he has absolute authority over traffic calming devices. So initially, all traffic calming devices are actually prohibited. They have to be approved by him. And in our discussions with Chief Vac and his staff, they really do not want to install vertical deflection devices in the public right-of-way. We actually concur with that for their reasons, as well as some of the reasons we just saw. So the amendment that's, that is in your packet, we updated the policy, you know, the first part of it is update to Section 6. It basically just says that we're removing speed humps, speed cushions, and speed tables for certain reasons, because they have adverse impacts. It goes on to explain that it's under the authority of our adoption of the International Fire Code, which gives our fire marshal authority on traffic calming devices. We've determined that, in consultation with them, we've determined that it's, we don't want to do this. And then a list specifically the types of vertical deflection devices that are prohibited. But we do recognize that, for a lot of reasons, we may want to have specific designs, specific context-sensitive designs, or designs in our historic district, or new projects where there may be a valid reason for raising the intersection, or raising a trail crossing, or pedestrian crossing. We don't want to prohibit that, but if we're going to do that, we want to make sure that the grades are gradual, and they don't give the effect of a harsh speed pump. So that is still allowed, but the applicant or designer would have to work with the fire marshal in our office. So the updated policy also, it removes that, but it also goes into more detail about the allowed measures. And this first one actually was supposed to be crossed out on the slides, so apologize for that. But there are lots of things that are actually more effective than speed humps, and there's things that we call chicanes, which add curvature to the road, that create a slalom effect, you know, on a straightaway that tends to support speeding, narrowing or neck downs, physical separators or channelization, on-street parking with bulbous is a pretty common one that has a lot of benefit. And then there's some other things, textured or colored pavement, landscaping, street furniture, even street art. So when you get, kind of create, you know, places where people can congregate, that actually slows traffic down. Canton Street, by virtue of all the people, has the lowest speeds anywhere in the city. The average is 11 to 12 miles per hour, and there's no speed humps there. So just introducing people in the right-of-way actually has a good effect. And of course, anything else that's listed in the Residential Traffic Control Enhancement Program, which I'm going to discuss is the next item. So the financial impact, there's no financial impact to the city as of now. It's a 50-50 cost split between the neighborhood applicant and the city. So we do have a 50% match. However, currently, we don't have a budget item in this year's budget for matching funds. We do have about a $6,400 rollover from some past activities, but there's, I just want to let you know that if a program was to be developed right now, we don't have a lot of funding for it. So with that, I'll take any questions or ask guidance, ask for any guidance. Yes?
Thank you for bringing this to our attention, and, yeah, I see two different areas. You know, you mentioned Canton Street or other roads, and then you mentioned neighborhoods, which I divide, you know, two different things, you know, specific neighborhoods. So my question is, on the 50-50 you are proposing here, by the time that the neighbor, or these speed bumps or other similar devices were put on the road, that was mandated by the city, you know, who paid for this back then? And if they had to be removed, who would be responsible, you know, fairly would be responsible for?
Good questions, yeah. Well, first of all, I should say that the traffic calming policy, we hadn't changed the procedure, which is basically that 65% of the affected residents have to approve it. That's a tough number to get, and it's has never, in the last 10 years, it has never been achieved for speed humps. So one of the reasons we're getting rid of this, because in addition to everything else, is that that's the first thing that's kind of thrown up as a possible solution, and it's also the hardest thing to get approved. So there's been only a couple places in the city where speed humps were installed. The policy requires, I believe it's a 50-50 cost share to remove them as well, so...
So to install was a 50-50?
Yes.
Okay, to install was 50-50, so then to remove, you're proposing also 50-50?
I believe it's 50-50 in the current procedure. I could check that.
Yes, it is 50-50. And I just want to add, so the policy only applies to local roads, and HOA or a group of residents can request that. That's a policy to facilitate what the residents may want. There's nothing that the city is mandating on anybody. If an HOA or a group of residents, they want to, they think the traffic problem in their subdivision is at a level where they want to do something about it, that's when they come to the city, we work with them, we work with them to come up with some solutions, and then they go back and they get the input from their residents. The city requires to see their formal petition done with a 65% in favor. And it may seem high, it may seem hard to achieve, but I remember doing the research back in 2011, and I still talk to other agencies, that's a pretty solid number, that's what pretty much everybody else uses as well, because, you know, there is always people who are for and against these devices. Everybody looks at them differently. So I think the program is pretty solid, so I think it's good.
Would this change would be forcing all these different neighborhoods to remove them, or still it's up to the 65% of the neighborhood to keep the devices or remove the devices with this new proposal?
Go ahead. Well, I was just going to say that there's only a few, and we would actually have to work with the fire marshal to determine what we want to do with them. So I don't have an answer to that question. We'd also have to research how they went in, but there's, there's like three or four speed cushions in the city that I'm aware of.
So I guess the devices that are in place, I would just say they are grandfathered in, that they've been around for a very long time. Unless the fire department thinks differently, I would just leave the ones that are already installed alone and just implement this going forward.
And actually, on the ones that are installed, they're actually the speed cushions. I've actually got photographs of people driving right between them, so it kind of defeats the purpose.
A question, just to clarify on some of the items that you had listed, if you can go back to that list. One of the things that I noticed on that list is physical separators.
Yes.
And I have seen those used very effectively in some other cities, but I was under the impression that they were not allowed in Roswell, like, for instance, like an attractive railing or something that would separate, you know, pedestrian access or sidewalks from the street itself. Is that something that's allowed only on local access road, or is it something that could be considered on state roads as well?
Well, to answer the first part of the question, the device there, there's some examples of it in the policy document, but those are really kind of the middle-of-the-road separators or medians.
Right.
And, or they can come in from the side and just kind of take a really wide lane and narrow it down. The, we would have to look specifically what you're talking about on the roadside, but generally, there is a clear zone requirement from the face of curb or the edge of pavement that we have to have setbacks for, for things that are not breakaway, like, you know, walls with reinforced, you know, steel in them have to be a certain distance from the roadway. But there's other breakaway things that can go close to the roadway.
All right, yeah. Now, I would like to follow up with you separately on that.
Sure.
But some things I've seen that work, seem to work well.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we always talk about it, kind of the narrowing of the feel of the roadway has probably more to do with speeds than any other factor.
Right, exactly. All right, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Judy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the mayor. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. unanimous. Thank you. Item number 10, consideration to amend the City of Roswell Residential Traffic Control Enhancement Policy. Mr. Brewer?
Okay, this one's a little quicker and easier. This just applies to the lesser speeding problems in, also on local streets, and we're planning to update the document that was approved by the mayor and council back in 2014 and bring it for a new approval. The amendments are very minor. Actually, I'm going to go to the next slide here, which shows actual amendments. So what's in there now are in-street pedestrian warning assemblies, which are, you know, the yellow in-road signs that you have seen in some situations, the driver feedback radar sign, which is actually one of our most requested and popular things that we do as a first strike against speeding, the rectangle rapid flashing beacons. We create crosswalks and crossings and enhance existing pedestrian crossings using the yellow strobe-like pedestrian actuator system. We use them at all the roundabouts and several mid-block crossings across the city. The flashing beacons are, they're either yellow or red, LED-type assemblies that we can add to signs to emphasize, you know, if we're having people running stop signs or they're not abiding by certain warning signs, we can add those. The key change is that in the previous document, there was a "Keep Kids Alive, Drive 25" sign. That's actually from an organization, Pedestrian Safety Advocacy Group. The issue that we have is that we only have jurisdiction on signs in the public right-of-way, and by law, we have to only approve certain types that are approved by federal guidelines. So we're suggesting just to put in this document, the playground signs, which is the, it's basically a diamond warning sign with children on a seesaw. I think most of you have seen it, sometimes seen it around schools and parks. That's an acceptable sign, and we can use it for areas next to playgrounds where children are congregating or playing in the street. We have installed several of those the last couple months. The raised pavement markers, those are the RPMs, they're the little reflectors you see on the road. There's all types, there's actually internally illuminated ones, there's solar power that light up at night. Those are gaining popularity. Flexible post delineators, we just kind of modified and added some photos into the policy. And speed reduction pavement markings, which is, it's a standardized treatment. We just try to hear a magnolia approaching the Georgetown Chase subdivision there as a way. Basically, it's a set of markings that they're, they start off really far apart, and then they get closer and closer, and the idea is that it gives you kind of an optical illusion that you're speeding, even though you're doing the same speed, and then you tend to kind of let off the accelerator and slow down a little bit. So we'll see how effective that was. It's a little bit effective, but it's, it was worth trying, but we're willing to do that. So in this situation, all these treatments and measures are 100% funded by the local neighborhood or HOA, and there's no financial impact to the city. So that's it on this, so I'll take any questions.
Well, I slowed down the other day trying to figure out what that was, so it works. I was like, what in the world's going on here?
Yeah, we had somebody ask us if there was some funky on-street parking, so...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Judy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Willsey. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Item number 11, consideration to approve a construction contract, E. Arsenault Contractor Incorporated, on amount not to exceed $5,961,858.99, State Route 9, Atlanta Street and Oxbow Road Intersection, T-Splas Project. Mr. Ralph?
Thank you, Gary. So this is big and exciting. So we have our State Route 9, Oxbow Intersection Improvement Project that we have been working on for many years. This was Tier 1 T-Splas project, so now it's funded, and we are finally ready to put it to construction. So the scope of the project is to realign the two, realign Oxbow basically with the Oxbow Drive that connects it to Mimosa Boulevard, and improve the intersection of Highway 9 and Oxbow with the traffic signal and turn lanes, and then extend Elm Street all the way to Maple Street, and then upgrade the current Pleasant Hill, which is very steep in one lane, and we upgraded to less steep in a two-way street. So here's a map of the project from the T-Splas approval process. So this is the, again, the intersection of Highway 9 and Oxbow. Currently, actually, it exists somewhere here, so it comes down and we install a traffic signal with turn lanes and align this Oxbow Road with this Oxbow Drive to connect to Mimosa. And then this, the existing Pleasant Hill is somewhere here, it's very steep, and it's one-way going north, so we're going to make it a two-way street, and it kind of comes around to get some, to gain some distance to make it less steep. And then this is, this would be the new connector road. It connects this Oxbow Road to the Maple Street here and continues on Elm to improve connectivity and kind of give access to the Mill Village area, to the rest of the area, to the north and east, with that going on to Highway 9. So again, you know, at the intersection of 9 and Oxbow, it's pretty, it's pretty dangerous. A lot of people just don't use it. It's very common, you, if you go there, you'd see it every day, all times of the day actually, where people would come west on Oxbow, make a right on this one-way Pleasant Hill, very steep, go up, and use the Oak Street traffic signal to make a left onto Highway 9. You would see that pattern any day of, any time of the day, because here, when this Oxbow, current Oxbow, when it approaches to Highway 9, of course, there is no traffic signal, and it's very steep where it connects to Highway 9. So that's what causing a lot of people to avoid that intersection, and then of course, still there is people who are making that left and then, you know, getting into these accidents. So on a, based on a three-year average, we get about three- So on a, based on a three-year average, we get about three crashes every month. So we received, we went through our formal process to receive bids, we got five, and city staff is recommending awarding the construction contract to ER Snell Contractor, Inc., and their bid was the second lowest amongst the five. So we had, of course, we had that lowest, the low bid as well, that's from a different contractor. That contractor has worked with us on two other projects recently. One was the Transpations project, which is Hardscrabble Green Loop, and then the other contract, other project was Public Works Pine Grove Culvert Replacement Project. So we've had a lot of issues on both of those projects that involved, of course, the department, the lead department, and then legal and our finance department. So it's a combined recommendation from, in this case, from Transportation, Legal, and Finance Department to go with the second lowest bidder, which is ER Snell, and you have a memo from our finance department, Greg Anderson, that kind of explains their take on the issues we've had, and they are agreeing with the, with the recommendation. And really, the difference in cost between the second lowest and the lowest is actually less than $300,000. So staff's opinion is that that's totally worth it, because this Oxbow is a pretty, it's a large, complicated project, and that's where, you know, if a contractor wanted to, you know, do certain things like the lowest bidder has done on some other projects, you know, they, they will have a lot of opportunity there, so...and they got very good reference for this ER Snell company that we are recommending to award to. So the financial impact, Oxbow project, it already has over $4.8 million of the T-Splus money, and staff is recommending a budget amendment to shift $2 million from the Big Creek Parkway T-Splus account to enable the current number, which is 5.9, and maybe keep some extra for maybe some future foreseeable needs on the current project. So this $2 million, this was all incorporated, accounted for in all those lengthy calculations you saw a couple of months ago when we were talking about the Big Creek Parkway project and partnership with GMI, so this was all incorporated on that. So we are, staff's recommendation is to do this budget amendment and bring the, bring to a future council meeting, awarding to the second lowest bidder, which is ER Snell. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Floor's open.
So, couple of questions. What is experience, what is experience of the city with ER Snell contractors? Have you, we done project with them, and what will be your opinion of those projects?
So we have, we don't have done any projects with them. Actually, I don't remember doing any, that they have done any projects for us, but we've got very good references. We have at least, and we have heard good things about that company, so, and our peers who have worked with them, they have given them good reviews.
And my second question is, so you want to move extra money for the project for any future anticipated cost, so...
Can I clarify that, please? So we want to move two extra million here. Currently, we have 4.8, and we need 5.9. So to cover that difference and some future expenses, it's, it's a big project, it's going to have, you know, certain things that some we could foresee, some we can't. So we believe that just doing it once, not keep coming back to you. We think that if we moved the $2 million over, that would cover the whole project, basically.
Okay, because maybe one option is to, at some point, eliminate the cut through, through the Mill Village portion, the road there that we have on the map, and this will also save us money eliminating the, the cut through on, into Mill Village. So there's another option to save more money, more taxpayers' money.
So...
You know, we will have more available immediately for other projects.
Okay, so I wouldn't call it a cut through, through the Mill Village. What I would call it, a very important safety connection, and the reason I say that is...some extra slides. I mean, if you can picture the, I think I had some extra graphics here, yes, okay. So if you can picture the intersection of Highway 9 and Sloan Street, that's right by our square. That's another one of those dysfunctional intersections. So if you notice, this is now, of course, going south, coming down here. This is, so the Mill Village area has only three access points. One is Maple Street, that's a one-way street going in, which is actually hard to see. A lot of people just don't use it, it's just a steep grid going down it. So that's one place to go into Mill Village that most people can't even see, and it's just hard to make a turn on that. Next opportunity, if you're going south, is this signalized intersection of Sloan and Highway 9 Park Square, but there is no turn lane here. No turn lane and no green arrow to get into the Mill Village area. So if a vehicle parks here, stands here waiting for a gap in the northbound traffic, so they are like really sitting at a spot where they could get hit very easily from the flow of traffic going south on Highway 9. So it's a safety concern for the residents or the business owners or visitors of the Mill Village area, and also for the traveling public on, on Highway 9, and it's, it's an unnecessary disruption to the, to the, to the traffic on Highway 9. So that's one. And, you know, we could always do a project here, but then, as you can see, the buildings, like, there is not even 10 feet from the edge of the pavement to the building, so there is no room to expand. And when we add a left turn lane here, we may have to do some widening on this side as well, so you impact this building where the visitor center is, and across, diagonally across is these other businesses, they're just way too close. We'll actually have to buy some of the businesses to do that. And if you go further down, now this is the third access for the Mill Village. Again, this is Highway 9, 120 coming in, Mill Village on this side. Again, this is the square. So now to same situation, no left turn lane, no green arrow, and to add a left turn lane here, we, of course, you know, we would never impact the square, so there is just no room to do it, absolutely. So all three access points for the Mill Village area are not safe. So that's why, in our project, we are adding. So it would be an option for the residents and the visitors and the business owners of the Mill Village area just to use this Oxbow. There is going to be a turn lane, it's going to have a green arrow, and it'll just allow safer movement for them to make this left onto Oxbow and then make a right onto this. This Elm Street, the connector road, is as narrow as it could possibly be, and then this piece here, this is also existing Elm Street, this is also like very, very narrow. And if you continue, say if you were just passing by, and a driver, you know, you chose to not stay on Highway 9, but use this road, so you go through these very narrow streets with stop signs, and then in the end, you come out at the traffic signal on Highway 9 at Mill Village. So the way that traffic signal operates is, of course, all traffic signals operate based on the traffic volume that each movement has. So of course, Highway 9 has a traffic volume, 120 coming in has a traffic volume, and then Mill Village, exiting the Mill Village area, has a certain traffic volume, so they get there, proportionate green time, and the Mill Village side gets very little green time based on the traffic that they have. So this is not going to be a quick way around. If somebody wants to try it, yeah, they can, but it's, it's not going to be quick, and it's not going to be very comfortable, because the lanes are just so narrow.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilor Judy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Welzy. Any further questions or discussion? All favor, please raise your hands. Motion carries, thank you. Item number 12, consideration of purchase stream credits related to the State Route 9, Atlanta Street and Oxbow Road intersection, T-Splus project, in amount not to exceed $50,976. Mr. Ralph.
Thank you, Gary. I'm going to have our engineering design manager, Greg Nicholas, present that item.
Good morning. This item is for the purchase of stream credits related to the Oxbow Road intersection project. Just a little bit of background, the construction of the Oxbow project required permit by the Army Corps of Engineers due to an impact of an existing stream, and in order for us to obtain the permit, we are required to buy stream credits from a mitigation bank. Now, mitigation bank is really a process for which streams and wetlands are restored, preserved, or enhanced in order to provide compensation for unavoidable impacts to projects similar to the Oxbow project. Banks are certified throughout the state by state and federal agencies, and we have, we reached out to four, four or five banks, and heard back from three. One had no credits available until January, another one gave us a price of $49, a little over $49 per credit, and then the lowest came in at $48 per credit, in which we need 1,062 credits. Go into the screen here. The blue line, here is, the existing Oxbow road is right here, this is the existing stream that ends basically at Oxbow Road, goes into a pipe, and then the pipe comes out over here. So these are the two minor impacts that we have. It's close to 290 feet of stream impacts, and T-Splus funds are available to cover the $50,976. Any questions?
Floor's open.
A quick question, was this cost contemplated on the original proposal, or is it just an addition to the original project? Well, the project has been mutating several times, so this is part of the previous, the last mutation, so this is a new mutation of the project?
I mean, so, once this project has started, I mean, it was always known that we were going to impact the stream, we just didn't know how much, you know, and as a result, you know, we minimized the impact as much as we could.
So this is actually pretty common. We did it for our Sun Valley 1 project when we constructed that a couple of years ago, so this is a pretty common thing to do, and we knew we were going to do it, like Greg said, we just didn't know how much. And now, since we are starting the project, now we, we were going to see a lot of smaller items here and there for the project where, you know, we need help other than just the contractor that we are just awarding the contract to, so we're going to need other work as well. But it's all included in the total cost.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilor Judy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Welzy. Any further questions or discussion? All favor, please raise your hands. You have it, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got the finance. Item number 13, consideration of the mayor and/or city administrator to award contracts to American Facility Group and GMI Group for janitorial services. Mr. Ralph.
We have two off-cycle items that we're bringing to you today, primarily due to some time constraints that we're running into. The first one is consideration toward a contract for janitorial services. Our current contract is a citywide contract, it's coming up for expiration, so we've been working on procuring a new contract over the last few months. This was a two-phase procurement process, where we went through a pre-qualification phase first. Notice was sent to over 1,900 targeted industry suppliers. We did receive nine qualifications from nine different companies. Out of that process, there was a evaluation committee that evaluated all these qualifications and narrowed it down to four companies that were deemed qualified. The next phase of the procurement included the bid phase, where we invited all four companies to submit bids for all the locations that were included as part of the specifications. So as a result, we are recommending awarding to the low bids from two, recommending to award to two low bids from two different companies. So for the City Hall location, it would be American Facility Group. The annual cost would be $91,400. For all the other locations, we are recommending GMI Group, with a total cost of $58,464. Overall, this represents a 4% increase in our costs, and we are, again, because of time constraints, requesting to move this to the 9:30 mayor and council agenda. I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Floor's open.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilor Sipata.
Second.
Second by Councilor Judy. Any questions or comments? All favor, please raise your hands. You have it, thank you. Item number 14, consideration of the mayor and/or city administrator to award a contract of first try on securities for financial advisor services in the amount not to exceed $75,000. Mr. Ralph.
So this item is kind of long overdue. Just to give you some background, we have a financial advisor currently, and basically, their services have been used in the past primarily when it's come to debt issuance, if a bond referendum has been approved, and we go through the debt issuance process, that's when we've used our services. Also, they've helped in the past in looking at, you know, if we are thinking about even going forward with debt, helping us evaluate our debt capacity and debt affordability. So those are the primary services we've used them for in the past. These, this contract was last competitively procured in 2008, so we're kind of long overdue to go back and look at this, so that's the primary reason we went back and went through this RFP process. Also, wanted to give you a little bit of background on financial advisor or municipal advisors in general, and how heavily they're regulated by the federal government. So you might have heard of the Dodd-Frank Act that was passed back in 2010. One of the things that that law did was set rules for municipal advisors, and the biggest item that came out of that was that municipal advisors have a fiduciary duty to governmental clients, which means everything that they recommend to us, everything that they advise us on has to be in the best interest of the city, not in their best interest. Also, municipal advisors are required to register with the Securities and Exchange Commission, as well as the, another agency called the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board, as well as the MSRB also sets certain guidelines, requirements, certifications that municipal advisors are required to obtain in order to be certified as a municipal advisor. Just in general, this isn't a, this is not an exhaustive list of everything that we included in the scope of services, but this kind of captures the bulk of that, some of the things that they could provide to us on an as-needed basis, and I want to clarify that here, too. Anything that's in the scope of services is all on an as-needed basis. So that includes, you know, reviewing and making recommendations on financial policies. They also help us in working with rating agencies to assist the city in maintaining our AAA bond rating. They can help us in developing options, plans, and strategies for future financing needs, providing that analysis on debt capacity and affordability. If the city were to move forward in the future on another bond referendum, this is kind of where the bulk of their services are probably going to come in, is because they help us, they help guide us through that process, and all the other parties that we have to bring into that process. But we also have them available for other special projects as we might need them. So if the city were to be looking at an economic development opportunity, public-private partnership, they can help us in evaluating that and providing analysis on, you know, whether it's a benefit to the city. So as we went through the RFP process, we did receive responses from, we targeted, or we sent notice to over 600 different suppliers. We... We received proposals from six firms. We put together an evaluation committee. The evaluation committee looked at all the proposals and evaluated them based on their advisory methodology, their expertise, their firm references and capacity to serve, as well as cost. Cost played a small portion in the overall evaluation criteria as well. So we also want to let you know, we did bring in, of the six that responded, five of the firms were invited in for an interview. All of the firms that we reviewed were very highly qualified, which was a good thing to have, but it, and it made for a difficult decision. So all of them were very highly qualified. Following the interviews, we finalized our scores, included costs in the evaluation process. And at that point, the committee recommended to award a contract to First Tryon Securities. Just to give you a little bit of information about them, First Tryon is based in Charlotte, North Carolina. They do have offices in Atlanta, Gulf Breeze, Florida, Jacksonville, Florida, and Boone, North Carolina. They were founded in 1996. They have a tremendous amount of experience in North and South Carolina and in the last few years have gained a lot more business and experience in the Georgia market. Some of their clients in Georgia include Marta, Fulton County, the City of Swanee, City of Dalton Utilities, several South Georgia counties. Some of the other big cities that you might have heard of that they work with, Greenville, South Carolina, Charleston, South Carolina, Durham, North Carolina, Merle Beach, Greensboro, North Carolina. And just to give you an idea of their experience, since 2014, they've served as financial advisor on over 175 publicly sold transactions totaling over $7 billion. And they have worked on over 245 privately placed transactions totaling $3 billion. If you look at Georgia specifically, since January 2016, they've served as financial advisor on 15 transactions in Georgia that have totaled around $1.6 billion, as well as numerous other non-transactional type advisory services. So based on their strong technical score, just the level of commitment that we saw in terms of their commitment to customer service, client engagement, that's kind of what led us to recommend First Tryon Securities. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Floor's open.
Ryan, I have a question. So who is our current financial advisor?
Currently, we have Hilltop Securities.
Okay. And my second question is this approval up to $75,000, but will be only on as-needed basis, right?
That's correct. So it's currently, there is no funding at $75,000. And we have some professional services money in our finance budget for things that might come up. But if, you know, we were to spend up to that $75,000, it's more in line or in place in case we were to, the city were to move forward with some kind of debt issuance setting that required more of a deeper level of engagement, so.
Okay. And then this mayor and council, we have to approve any request to this financial advisor to do any study that we want them to do? Have to be approved, whatever we ask them to take a look at, have to be approved by this mayor and council?
The small dollar items would not require council approval, but anything that would exceed the $25,000 mark, we would bring that back to council. But again, we don't have the funding for anything over $25,000, so we couldn't do that unless the council approved additional funding for that. So we're talking what we could do currently are small dollar advisor, you know, advisory services that we might need.
So let's say that, you know, for any big request to the, even below $70,000, we have to be in agreement of what kind of study we want to ask them to, to perform for the city, right?
Correct.
Okay. So move to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilor Zapata. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Welzy. Any further questions or discussion? All favor, please raise your hands. It's unanimous. Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
And we are adjourned.[1758.66]